Let's see, we have.
Kevin Soli.
Join the meeting.
Kevin, Bruce, Ann and Mike, so I think we have a full complement of full commission members. So no appointment, no, no alternates need to be appointed. First order of business is approval of the minutes. I'd like to defer that because we had a new clerk last time and I think we, we need to work on the minutes a little bit. And so Mike and I'll work on that and we'll bring them up again next time. We have no public hearings and the, I believe that our old business, application 20-09 of Mark's and Ikey Scully, they've asked us to defer, to table it again. Is that correct, Mike?
Yeah, they're, they're working on revised drawings to address some of the design review board's comments. And unfortunately, the, the architect did not complete the drawings for tonight's meeting. So that they're, they're asked to continue it for the next two weeks.
Okay. Do we have to move to table it?
You're, you're, you're within your statutory time, so you can have no action.
They're already tabled. Okay, the next order of business is application 20-10 of Albany Turnpike LLC, the owner. Kevin Soli is going to give us a little presentation of the plans for the development of 9-915 Albany Turnpike.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I might, my name is David Barkwitz. I represent the owner, 915 Albany Turnpike LLC. I'm a partner with Hasit and George in Silvery. Now, if I could just have one moment, then I'll introduce Kevin. The property that my client owns contains approximately-
Join the meeting.
Joins, contains approximately 26 acres, of which approximately 5.8 acres is in Canton. And the remaining of the acreage is in Simsbury. With me today is Kevin Soli, he'll present the plans for you. Also, joining us today is my client, Mark Greenberg. I don't believe he's on yet, but I expect him to join. And Richard Korea, our real estate consultant of R&amp;B Bradlin. As you know, and as you can see on the screen, this is an application for site plan approval for the development of a portion of my client's property that faces Albany Turnpike. The site plan contains a gas station and convenience store, which is entirely in Canton. And an electric vehicle showroom, which is in Simsbury in Canton. Also on the call tonight with us is our architect, who can respond to any questions that you may have about the EV showroom, which is in both Simsbury and Canton. And now I'll turn the meeting over to Kevin, and he can go through the plans with you. And then we can all address any questions or comments that you may have.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Soli. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Soli Engineering. Office is located at 501 Main Street on Monroe, Connecticut. So David, thank you so much for that introduction. So as David indicated, tonight we're here to talk about an application at 9 and 15 Albany Turnpike. So just to orient everyone, so here is an aerial of the town of Simsbury. This site is located just in the southwest corner of the, of the town, kind of right at the intersection or right along the town line between Canton and Simsbury, just north of the town line between Simsbury and Avon. So as David indicated, the overall site is approximately 26 acres. It's comprised of two parcels. There's a small parcel out front, which is 9 Albany Turnpike, which is approximately five point, or two acres. And then a larger parcel, the majority of it is 23.8 acres. And as David indicated, there's approximately 5.8 acres in Canton and approximately 18 acres in Simsbury. You can see the town line runs north, south, and it bifurcates the property in this manner here. So about well over five acres in Canton, and then the balance all in Simsbury. I'm, I'm sure everyone is very familiar with the site. As you drive up 44 into Canton, you can see, once you pass the, the Best Buy Plaza and you continue north, you can see a little bit of some rockout cropping and a pretty extensive vegetated area. There's some pretty extensive grade change across the property. And then you hit the old Brass Lantern Road, where the La Fronteria Restaurant is. And that Brass Lantern obviously has a loop. So we're essentially along the southern end or the easterly end of that Brass Lantern Road entrances where our primary site drive is going. And what we're proposing is a, what I'm, what I'm really excited about, and I like to kind of call the future of transportation from, from an overall project standpoint. So our project is proposed for the front portion of the property immediately along the front edge with Route 44. And what it includes is includes two, the construction of two buildings, an 8,300 square foot gas station with convenience store. But this also has a number of other elements to it. We're proposing a drive-through, potentially with a coffee shop inside. There would also be a sandwich shop located inside this facility, and also potentially an ice cream shop. So what we've done is we've tried to create-
Betty Fiora. Join the meeting.
Trying to create something more than just your standard gas station with a convenience store, but provides a number of other elements to it. Now, I want to point out here, here's the town line between Canton and Simsbury. So while the majority of the development is part of this project is primarily in Canton, there is a portion of the site in Simsbury. I'm going to present the overall project, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission has. But obviously, we know that we're here primarily for a portion of the project that's in Simsbury. And just for the record, we did actually go to design review for this project earlier tonight. And we did have a very favorable recommendation to this commission for your consideration. So, so back to the project. So, so this facility really is, is more than just your standard convenience store. And then out front, we have the fueling locations. And the gas station itself is being designed to really accommodate and to be able to adapt to the future trends that we see happening with automobiles. And the fact that a lot of these fueling stations are also being, are being designed so they can actually be replaced with rapid speed electric vehicle charging stations. So, so not just, you know, relying on fossil fuels and gas powered automobiles, but also preparing for the future in electric vehicles and the prevalence that we see coming with that. And that really brings us to the second part of the project, which is a 23,500 square feet electric vehicle showroom and service center. Now, this is the building located here, which is further east or south on 44. And a portion of this building is located actually in Simsbury. So this is a, a two-story facility, almost primarily within Canton.
Join the meeting.
And this is, and this is going to be the electric vehicle showroom. And it's been designed to actually accommodate up to four, or four tenants for these electric vehicle manufacturers. So if you think of some of the, some of the electric vehicle manufacturers, Rivian, Boynton, a, a number of other ones that you may not be too familiar with the names, but this is a place where they can come and they can have their vehicles on display. You can come in, you can test drive, you can see them. And then you can basically order them to be delivered to your home. And then the second part of the facility is a single-story service area, which would be located primarily in Simsbury, which is located in this location here. Access to the site would be provided through a proposed full movement driveway with a proposed traffic signal located along the western edge or the northerly edge of the property. And then a second right-in, right-out driveway, a little bit further east or south, kind of in between the two proposed buildings to provide adequate access and circulation through the site. The electric vehicle showroom and service area, we've designed it so it actually has a covered area of some electric vehicle charging stations. And then service, there'd be access to the service through the circle here in front of the building, and another egress for the service up to the north or eastern end of the site through here. The, as you, including our package is a grading and drainage plan. Our stormwater management system has been designed in accordance with the 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual as provided by the DEEP, and also the Town of Simsbury drainage requirements. A little bit of a unique site, as we've had to contend with not only the requirements of the Town of Simsbury, but also the Town of Canton. So our design drawings have been prepared, really looking at the overall site, to make sure that we're able to comply with both communities' requirements. The, we do have some pretty extensive grading required to accommodate the project. As you can see here, if you follow my, my cursor, there's, there's an existing home on the property in this location here, and we're proposing to, and right behind that, there's a pretty steep hill that kind of runs along in this location here. We're proposing some pretty extensive earthwork and removal of material to really accommodate this developed area. We're proposing a stabilized rock face to the north or to the rear of the site, which would really focus and enhance and highlight some of the, the trap rock in this area, create a, create a nice facade for this excavation for this rock face. Retaining wall excavated area through here, there is a point where that retaining wall transitions from being in a cut condition to being in a fill condition. We have a small portion of the site within Simsbury, which would be filled to accommodate this development, to kind of create this level pad for this overall project. Or as, as you come across the site, driving across 44, as you know, you're kind of driving up a hill. Our driveway location was selected because we wanted to put it as close to that, the top of that hill as possible to maximize visibility and for site distances for vehicles entering and exiting the project. And as you come further south or east, as you know, Route 44 comes up in grade pretty considerably. So the right-in, right-out is almost acting as a, as a ramp or a driveway up to a higher elevation pad. Part of our design is we wanted to try to maintain as much of the existing rock face that you see out there. So you can see, we're actually maintaining a pretty good portion, so that aesthetic will remain. But we're simply reducing the overall height and then kind of re-establishing that, that same aesthetic behind the project in this location here. The, we have a soil erosion and sediment control plan, which is prepared in accordance with the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Manual provided by DEEP, and also in accordance with both the Town of Canton and Town of Simsbury requirements. From a utility standpoint, we are proposing all underground utilities to service the facility. Those would come from Route 44 in Canton, and then come up the main driveway, and then to provide sewer, water, electric, and gas, all from Albany Turnpike underground and then across the property here. So, so we are proposing that the building that's partially in Canton and Simsbury to be serviced through utilities through Canton. We've included a robust landscape plan as part of our application. We have some pretty extensive plantings. One of the, one of the benefits of our site is since the, the overall intent is to create something that's more than just your standard gas station or anything like that, is we've actually been able to design some pretty extensive outdoor seating areas adjacent to the proposed gas convenience station here. We have a fire pit. We've created a really nice aesthetic, so it's a place where you can come and, and plug in your, you know, plug in your electric vehicle for, for, you know, 10 to 12 minute rapid charge session, and then go inside, grab a sandwich, grab some ice cream, sit outside and kind of enjoy the ambiance and the aesthetics of the place. The electric vehicle service and showroom, we're actually able to incorporate a very large landscaped island located in this location here, and provide some additional outdoor seating, some pretty nice landscaping through here to really kind of create a nice environment that's inviting, and it's, and it's a place where you can kind of go and, and, and enjoy beyond just going to either fill up your tank of gas or going to find a, a potential new electric vehicle. The lighting plan included in your submission package has been prepared in accordance with both Town of Canton and Simsbury requirements. We have a series of light poles throughout the project, but they're all designed to be dark sky compliant fixtures. So that's a recessed light, a recessed bulb that casts down on the pavement to eliminate, to avoid glare.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm supposed to be on a Zoom call for, so, and I can't get into it on my iPad. I can get into it on the computer. I can watch it going on.
I'm gonna see if we can mute whomever that is. There we go. Thank you. So our lighting plan has been designed in accordance with everyone's requirements. We're able to minimize glare. Again, the, the site topography kind of keeps all these lights within the site, where we have a, a retaining wall screen to the, to behind the site. And then again, we're kind of going to be up in the air a little bit. And we're able to maintain a pretty large vegetated buffer between the Best Buy site and our project. So there's some pretty good landscaping being maintained through this area with, with, with tall trees and things like that to prevent too much visibility from our development to the, to the south or to the east. Included in our submission package, we did prepare a comprehensive traffic impact study as part of the project. And we have had initial conversations with the Department of Transportation. This project will be going through a review process with the district for the, for the Department of Transportation. As part of our traffic study, we actually analyzed 11 intersections throughout the corridor, number in Simsbury, number in Avon, and the balance in Canton. Through our proposed traffic analysis, we have certain tools that we can use as traffic engineers. We anticipated a potential trip generation-
My problem is that I am currently on a Zoom call. I've always been-
We are, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought there. We use trip generation rates established by the Institute of Transportation Engineers and determine what the anticipated number of trips that would be generated by our proposed development. We then go out and evaluate traffic volumes for the corridor, the area roadway network. We determine the traffic operating conditions on how these intersections will operate under existing conditions, under background conditions if the project wasn't to be constructed. And then we apply our proposed trip gener, trip generation to the network to determine how the, how the roadway network will operate after our product is constructed. And thankfully, we've been able to demonstrate that the project will maintain acceptable levels of service throughout the corridor. And as part of our review with our proposed traffic signal, we will be going through a process with the Department of Transportation, both in the district office and also up in Newington. So this commission and everyone can have additional comfort, that there's an additional layer of review and permitting associated with our proposed project. To focus on the building proposed in Simsbury, we do have our proposed floor plans and elevations, which I'll go through, not in too much detail. But again, as I mentioned, the maintenance area, which is actually primarily in the Town of Simsbury, it just so happens our town line kind of runs right through this location here. So the, the service area is entirely within Simsbury. The portion of the building that's in Canton is the larger showroom. And this is proposed to be two stories up along the front of the property here. And this is designed to really kind of accommodate up to four potential electric vehicle manufacturer tenants. So you'd be able to come in, there'd be kind of a quadrant on each side, on each floor, so that this could be one make of electric vehicles. There'd be a second set on the first floor here. It's been designed with a car elevator coming in from outside to either allow vehicles to come into the first floor or come up to the second floor. And then on the second floor, we, Phase Zero and Chris Milliards, who's here to answer any questions the commission may have, they designed a really, really cool building, which is really being designed to be a prototype for something that could be rolled out on a, on a, on a state, from a, from a state standpoint. And this really is going to serve as that first prototype for, for, for this type of facility with, to provide the residents of Simsbury and the surrounding area the opportunity to go find and really experience and understand the electrical vehicles that are, that are coming into the market and give them a place to go, see them, test drive them, and then order something that they might want to, want to purchase and take home. And they've been able to design the building, so it has a very, very large, open entrance way. So this is all open to below from the second level. And the second floor is again, is another vehicle showroom, again, split in half, so there'd be a separate, separate tenant here, and then on this side. Another really interesting component that we've, that we built into the design is actually a rooftop patio above the maintenance portion of the, of the building. This would be access from the second floor, a place to have, you know, small gatherings or events or things like that. And then the balance of the roof of the maintenance building, we're designing to potentially be a green roof to provide some additional aesthetics when you're up here. And I think one of the other benefits of the site is how the site's positioned, the elevations of the property, and how Route 44 continues to drop in grade as you go back towards Simsbury and then into Avon. The views from this, from this roof patio are really going to be quite something. And we think you're going to be, really see all of Avon now and, and even further. It's going to be a really, really interesting place to, place to be. We have our architectural elevations, which again, we, we were able to present these to the design review board, and they, they viewed them very favorably. It's a little bit hard to see the black and white elevations through these Zoom meetings. But you can see, this is a side view, kind of facing the Best Buy. You can see that the limits of the two stories, which again, Route 44 would be here on the left side of your screen, the two-story showroom area, and then the single-story service area with the rooftop patio and then the, the green roof. But what I'd like to show you is some of the elevations that-
Join the meeting.
-have been able to pull together that really kind of highlights and, and shows what we're excited of is really going to be a great focal point for the Town of Simsbury and the Town of Canton as you kind of come through this part of 44. So this is, this is on Route 44, kind of looking up towards the site. You can see we've been able to maintain a good cha, a good chunk of that existing trap rock, rock elevation. And then you can see towards the right side of the screen, this is the service area. This is probably actually the town line roughly right here, where that transition between single story and two-story comes into play. And then as you kind of come across, this would be traveling up Route 44. And this, this drive here is actually the right-in, right-out driveway that comes in between the proposed electric vehicle showroom. And then the gas convenience station would be on the left-hand side off the screen. One of the things we've been able to do and show in this picture is that we are trying to focus on creating a really nice aesthetic for this stabilized rock face wall behind the project. We think that this is really going to serve a great purpose in kind of, we understand and recognize that there's an aesthetic to this rock face that, that certainly offers some character, some character for, for, for both communities. And rather than simply saying we're going to eliminate it or, 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 you know, create a project that's going to be a detriment to it, we really feel we're able to highlight that resource and really kind of create a central focal point behind the facility and provide a really nice aesthetic for how that, how that rock face should be in the future once the project is, is finished. And then as we come further into the site, this would actually look at, this would be looking back at the main entrance. So the, again, the town line kind of runs right through the building here. The service area is to the left. And as I mentioned before, we have a ring of electric vehicle charging stations, and we're proposing a canopy above that, so it can actually be something that you can, you can pull in and you can get out, plug in your car, and still be protected from, from rain and the elements. And then this is kind of the main focal point of the entrance into the showroom area. Again, this is actually all in Canton, but we wanted to again, show the commission the overall aesthetic of what we're looking at. And then just a little bit zoomed out, you can see this is the actual elevator, the access from, from outside, where you'd be able to pull in vehicles to bring them up to that second level showroom, or even up to the first floor. And then here's an image of our, so this is up on the rooftop patio, looking back towards the north. So this is kind of that, that rock face in the background. And you can see, as you look to the right, this would be looking, starting to look down more into Simsbury. And then obviously, if you're facing Route 44, which would be kind of away from the screen, you'd be able to see that, that hill from, from Avon now. And then we have one more, a really nice rendering at a, at a, at a nice time of day just to kind of show what, what the architectural style and design is. I personally think that, that the team at Phase Zero did a fantastic job pulling together a really interesting concept here. And again, we're excited because this will really serve to be a prototype for something that we think is going to be a great addition to not only these communities, but really is a benefit to the, to the state and the region as a whole. Anywhere where we can provide this opportunity to get people into kind of a more renewable form of transportation with this electric vehicle, we're really excited about. And the overall project as a whole, it was a fun one to be a part of on the design side because it really is focused on, and again, what I said before, the future of transportation in terms of trying to be nimble and agile and create a product and a project that can be getting away from fossil fuels with that focus on sustainability and things like that. So we're really excited about the project as a whole. Obviously, we understand that a very small component of the project is in, is in Simsbury. And we do, we are in the process with the Town of Canton. I actually have a meeting tomorrow night with the Conservation Commission and a public hearing with Planning and Zoning later this month in the Town of Canton. But we wanted, obviously, we obviously have a portion in Simsbury. We wanted to come to the commission, talk through our project, and solicit any feedback or comments you may have.
Thank you. Commission members. Anybody have some questions or comments?
I guess I have two questions. One, it's the Canton part of the building, but those little jutouts where the, which were really cool, where the cars are on display, will you actually be able to see those cars from 44?
Um, hang on one second. I, I do believe you will, since those are going to be, those are going to be kind of up in the air. And I think I lost my, I think I lost my camera. You guys really want to see my face, but, um, yeah, they're, they're kind of up in the air. And we've designed it with all glass facades, so that it really can create a, a really nice aesthetic and an image. So we do think that you're going to be able to see those. And then we've also provided beneath those kind of jutouts, some locations underground for some additional, you know, car display directly underneath. So we do think you're going to be able to see that from 44.
I was just worried about the angle there, whether, you know, you're showing it up, your, your, your rendering is a little higher than the road. And the other thing is those white panels that are behind it, can we make sure that they're, are they translucent or are they solid?
This is Chris. Yeah, those would be solid. This is Chris from Phase Zero.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Just making sure, because we have another issue where we were surprised when-
Actually, let me, let me make sure I understand. When you say translucent panels, are you talking about to the right side of this render?
At the end of the facade of the building.
On, on the right side, where the, the single-story portion of the building is located in Simsbury, those panels along the top would be a, a glass, a glass window to bring light into the, the service center.
Yeah, well, what about below that?
Below that would be solid, a solid panel.
All right. Just making sure they're not lit panels.
No. I don't, we, we're not proposing any backlit panels right now. I think, if I'm not mistaken, though, I think Toyota has that on their facade.
Yeah, right, we didn't know that.
Okay, no, no, it's not, that is not the intention.
Okay, very futuristic, it's kind of cool.
Donna?
Oh, it's a great project. I, I like it a lot. The only thing that concerned me in reading through the report and everything were, how much rock are you taking out? How long is that going to take you? So I have a concern noise-wise, I guess. Because I noticed Saturdays, Saturdays are solid for, for construction as well. And, you know, I, I wouldn't want to live there, but it's just a, it's just a question.
Join the meeting.
So, you know, there is, as I stated before, I mean, there is a decent amount of cut and excavation required to develop the property. And I think that's part of the reason why the property hasn't been developed for as many years. You know, we're, the, the property owner now and the applicant is, is excited in, in creating a development that can kind of support the, the work required. So, so we do have a fairly large cut towards the back, as I mentioned. There will, there will be a need to remove a good amount of material and to process that material so it can be utilized on-site, but there will be some export. And again, there is a transition between where that wall becomes a cut down to a, to a fill wall. So there will be a lot of activity. We think we're, you know, we think that work can be completed in probably 12 to 15 months from an excavation standpoint. But the, the goal is obviously to get- But the goal is obviously to get the gas station convenience store open as soon as possible and prepare the site for the electric vehicle showroom and get that in accordance with, you know, all the timing considerations that we're looking at.
Yeah. So 12 months of Saturday.
Anne Erickson. Join the meeting.
I ask my only concern really. Everything else looks really fantastic. But it's a lot of work to put up with on Saturdays.
Mostly, there isn't much residential in that area.
Yeah. Well, it depends on how loud it is, I guess.
West Mountain's not too far away.
West Mountain Road to the north.
Yeah. All right.
And a house across the street.
Yeah.
Anne, do you have any comments?
I haven't been able to hear it. I've been able to watch it, but I have no sound. So I just called in on my cell phone and so I'm listening to you on the phone and watching it. So no, I have nothing to add right now.
Okay. Bruce?
Well, I want to, I guess, I'm not, I didn't find that the response to how much rock is being removed very satisfactory. I'm surprised that at this point you can't identify, you know, in some measure, how much rock is coming out of there. Maybe you could tell us how it's going to be loosened. Is there going to be blasting routinely to loosen that rock so it can be taken away? And if so, is there concern at all for all the residents while they don't, you know, proximity is debatable and how important it is. But for miles around the residents in Simsbury are all on wells. And I don't have any personal experience with wells or the disappointing things that can happen with well owners when there is blasting. But is that the way, the methodology that's anticipated here? All that rock that is going to be removed is going to be the result of blasting?
So the project will require blasting in order to remove a lot of this rock. Now, blasting in itself is a very, very regulated activity. It requires, this will require coordination with fire marshals in both Canton and Simsbury. And as part of any blasting operation, it's required, the blaster is required to get permits from the fire marshals, but also do pre-blast surveys for all properties and all residences or structures within a specified radius. And I'll say that's a very important part of what happens when there's blasting for any project. And what happens is before they can even get started, they have to go out to all these properties, inspect the buildings, provide a pre-blast inspection report, fully document the conditions of the properties, understand what's going on with well service, if there's well water or anything like that. And they really document the conditions before any activity happens. And then during the blasting activity itself, as I stated, there's permits required from the fire marshals. There's notices that go out to all the surrounding properties in terms of when the blasts are going to happen. And then they have to install seismographs around the property and at some of the surrounding limits to actually measure the readings and to verify and to confirm that there is no readings beyond what's permissible in the code. And then throughout the project, if there's any damage or anything caused, the blaster is on the hook for that. And it's much more of a science than the average person may realize in terms of how material is blasted, how those blasts are designed so that they can minimize any disruption to any of the surrounding property owners, minimize any potential damage to any surrounding structures and things like that. So it is a very regulated and a very precise science, actually, when blasting companies come in and look to remove material like this because all the concerns that you have and everyone has, they're valid. And they want to make sure that they can operate a program, a blasting program, and not have damage because if something happens and if there is damage and they're on the hook to replace it and to repair it and to address it. So it is, it is a very, yeah.
I had something else I wanted to ask you about, but let me offer, maybe you've already heard this, maybe not, but on Maureen Drive, which is just to the north off West Mountain Road and on West Mountain Road, there were residents in that area who complained of problems with their wells after the work was done to expand the Hoffman Auto Park. In particular, the parking area that, oh, they don't call it parking. They call it vehicle storage that goes up to the north of their three buildings. So I will offer, you know, some concern on behalf of those residents that I don't know the details of what their problems were following the other building. And that goes back close to 15 years, 13 years, something like that. But you know, I think it's, you know, the approach that's required by law and regulation sounds reasonable to me, but you know, I'm sure bad things sometimes happen anyway. So I also wanted to ask about the removal process of the rubble, or rock or whatever. Did I understand you to be suggesting that the transportation out of there would only be on Saturdays?
No, not, no.
So five days a week, six days a week, there would be trucking in and out of that site to remove many, 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 many truckloads of rock. Is that a fair statement?
So yes, and that is something that, so the, in our communication and coordination with staff, we've kind of had some preliminary discussions about the rock removal and when those would be permitted from an hours of operation standpoint. And we are, we would propose that those would be able to happen on, you know, Monday through Friday and then also Monday through Saturday, actually, with adjusted hours Saturday. So that would start later in the day, not until 9:00 AM. But then absolutely no blasting or rock removal on Sundays or on holidays. The, so the material would be leaving the site, you know, throughout the week and on Saturdays. And it would, and we want to do that actually to really spread it out so it can happen periodically throughout the day. And you're not going to have a rush of traffic from a construction vehicle standpoint at any one time. And you certainly wouldn't want to limit it to only Saturday because that would create a whole different type of traffic pattern. And we want to be able to operate over longer periods of time to minimize that disruption.
Well, I'm further interested in how the, where the trucks are going in and out. I'm sure you don't intend to wait until the traffic light and the driveways are done to start the blasting. So you know, or maybe you do. I don't want to put words in your mouth. Where, what accessway will the trucks be using to go in and out of Route 44?
So as part of our project, we are proposing to the Brass Lantern right-of-way that currently is this kind of loop road in front of La Tratoria. So part of this process is we are looking to have the town of Canton actually convey that to these property owners. So our property line would actually come here, which is a little bit north or west of the existing driveway location where Brass Lantern comes out. And if anyone who's been through here, obviously the geometry for Brass Lantern is not great. And you know, there's a very large rock knob in front of La Tratoria. We'd be removing a portion of that to maximize site distance and to ensure that we have enough visibility in both directions. So that operation and vehicles from a construction standpoint would be coming through this end of Brass Lantern, but we'd be able to make modifications from an access standpoint during construction so that some of those enhancements from a visibility standpoint, from a geometry standpoint are taken into place now so that we can actually accommodate this operation, you know, during construction and then obviously prepare for this future driveway in the future.
So where the red cursor is right now is where the trucks are going to be entering and leaving Route 44 during the course of excavation and site work down there.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mike, any questions?
One other thing, when you talk to the people in Canton, I'm just surprised. It just doesn't, it strikes me as, I don't know, surprising that there's going to be a fire pit at the gas station. I'm not sure if they're going to be cooking hot dogs or what, but a fire pit at the gas station sounds like potential trouble.
Well, I think, I think that's why, and that's why kind of as I, as I talked through my presentation, I don't want anyone to think of this as a normal gas station because that's really not what this is, what's being proposed as part of this. Again, this is, you know, if you, if you're to go to, you know, even Cumberland Farms or similar type use like that, that convenience part or that's, that, you know, retail component of that facility is probably about 4,000 square feet. This is proposed to be 8,300 square feet. And what it does is we're actually designing it to have multiple different operations inside. So yes, there's your typical convenience store, but there's also an ice cream shop. There's also a sandwich shop and there's also a coffee shop with the drive-through. So it's more than just your standard where you're going to go fill up a tank of gas. We're trying to make it more than that. So it's, so it goes above and well above and beyond your standard gas convenience. And it really is more for, you know, a place where you can go after, you know, a little league game and the team can go and they can go grab ice cream. They can sit outside, you know, we're trying to create something that's more than just your standard gas station.
Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. I, Kevin started to address as part of Diane's question, my question, which is, is this site going to be built in phases? Or is the entire project going to be built at once? You know, is the convenience store and the electric vehicle showroom and service center all going to be built as one project? Or is the convenience store, gas, retail going to get built? And then someday, maybe if we get enough interest, the electric vehicle showroom and service building gets built?
So because of the amount of earthwork required, there likely will be, there could potentially be a point in time where we hope to open the gas station convenience store while the site work for the electric vehicle showroom is ongoing. You know, because as I said, there's a lot of material that has to come out and there's a lot of material that's got to get processed in order to leave the site. So we're, you know, a lot of that is going to be focused on prepping the signal for the new driveway, prepping this side to get this moving as quick as possible. And then the work is going to continue on going for the electric vehicle showroom. So there may be some phasing in terms of we're hoping to get the site work for the gas convenience finished first while we finish the electric vehicle showroom. But it's not that, I'll tell you, there's already been several meetings with several of the electric vehicle manufacturers and there's a tremendous amount of interest for this type of products, which is, which again, I think is really a benefit to the town of Simsbury and the surrounding areas because this really is kind of like a prototype for something that's more than just your standard, you know, auto showroom. Again, you know, something that's focused entirely on electric vehicles and serving some of those, some of those smaller electric vehicle producers or manufacturers who aren't going to have your, their full Ford dealership or Toyota dealership or things like that. This really kind of creates a different niche. And there's a tremendous amount of interest already. And there's been talk about doing four to five of these across the state. This is really going to be that flagship. So there's a desire to do this as quickly as possible because we think that's kind of the way with the future and we want to be able to serve this market.
Well, selfishly, I am that market because I own one of those cars and it would be amazing to have that about a mile and a half from my house. So I just, you know, sometimes projects like this come in front of us and the part that's easy and already contracts are signed on get done. And then the other side just leave, you know, the site work gets done and then it's, well, we don't have a tenant, so we're not building it till we have, you know, somebody to fill it. So that was, that was kind of the precipice for my question. So it'd be awesome to see it all, Bill.
So what is the, what is the timeframe that you're aiming for, Kevin? You've got to get approvals from two towns.
Two towns and the DOT. So we're optimistic that hopefully we'll have a quick path through this commission. We probably expect to have a little bit of a heavier lift in the town of Canton, but we're hoping to be through their permit process before the end of the year. And then we have some work to do with the DOT for the roadway improvements and the signal design and signal approval. But we'd be optimistic to actually hopefully get started in, you know, early to mid 2021 to get this project underway from a construction standpoint.
Do you, do you have a measure of the number of yards of material that you have to remove?
It's been somewhat fluid because we've been making some modifications to the, to the design. There were some, you know, right before we submitted, we had some minor tweaks to the electric vehicle showroom. There's probably about maybe 80,000 yards of material that has to get excavated to accommodate the development.
Totally? Or just the car building, the auto building?
Totally. For the entire, for the entire project.
And the lower part, the parts that's in Simsbury, that's going to be the maintenance area. You've got four competing dealers in one maintenance area. How does that get a portioned?
Well, that would actually be operated somewhat independently from the, from the sales in the showroom, where that's really focused on providing service to anybody with any electric vehicle. So Commissioner Doyle can, if he needs a service, he can bring it to here and get it serviced, you know, by technicians specifically trained in electric vehicles.
Good. He's happy about that, I think. Good. Anybody else have any more questions? Mike, do you, you're here? There you are.
Yes.
Yes. You have given us a, your staff report. Anything that you would like to point out in your staff report?
So just two things. One, the design review board reviewed this this evening. As Kevin indicated, they issued a favorable recommendation. And then in the staff report, just the one, make sure the right times are there. In keeping with Donna's comment about the potential for nuisance and noise for the site prep, we put in there Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And on the weekends, it's 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM with no work on Sundays. And then added, I guess Kevin said, confirmed with Kevin Soul?
He dropped out for a second.
Do you have me now?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Just, just to confirm, yeah, so you said yes to no work on holidays. I know you said that earlier.
Yes.
Yeah. So then 5C, 5C would say no work on Sundays and holidays.
And how about the town engineer approve the hydraulic stuff?
Yes, this was reviewed by Jeff and he gave it, he was okay.
Okay.
Does that, does Jeff's review include the 500 pages of engineering material they submitted with the details on drainage and stormwater and traffic management? Did Jeff look at all that stuff or?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. In the future, I would prefer to see a statement by Jeff, even if it's only one or two sentences for the record.
Okay.
Feel more comfortable with that. And especially if we had a chance, you know, I've been doing this on and off for a long time. I never saw the middle of 500 pages of engineering stuff. It's mind boggling, especially looking at it on a little, you know, a laptop computer. But okay. Thank you.
Okay. What's the sense of the commissioner? Would he like this enough to approve it?
I, I feel like we have enough information. I'm willing to support this proposal, although I wish it wasn't another gas station, but that's for the people of Canton to wrestle.
Canton, we worry about.
We're only looking at electric car dealership.
Mike, what do you think? Wait.
You couldn't tell from my ringing endorsement before I am for this one.
Kevin?
Yeah, I'm okay. It's probably the quickest approval of any large development.
80,000, 80,000 cubic yards of stuff moved.
I did have, you know, just to follow up on your comments about the material being removed. And you know, you're saying that the gas station's going to be done first, but then, so your removal trucks would have to go through the service station.
Yeah.
It just doesn't seem like it's the safest way to be done, but.
The people trying to go to the convenience store are going to have to be careful.
Watch out for falling rock. Yeah.
I think they'd have to phase it. I think they'd have to phase it carefully. Uh, someone want to make a note? We have a, uh, a proposed motion in the staff report.
Yeah, I actually, without having to read the whole thing, we just make the motion as presented.
You can reference attachment A.
Yeah, attachment.
From staff report.
I'll move, uh, regarding, I'll make a motion. Motion to approve application 70, uh, ZZ, S, no, that's a ZZ, 28, 90, 10 of nine to 15, all by the eight turns like LLC owner. And that we approve the development with the, um, subject to the conditions noted in, appendix A, is it?
Attachment.
Okay, attachment, okay. I'm trying to use my mouse on one computer and it's on attachment. Yeah, attachment A.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mike Doyle, further discussion.
So attachment A, uh, five C, we're adding and holidays, correct?
That's correct.
All right, okay, yes, yeah.
Those are national holidays or religious holidays or what?
It'd have to be Connecticut holidays, wouldn't it? I don't know. Any comment?
Like holidays.
I would just say holidays, leave it at that.
Just say holidays, they're not going to work in those days. Okay, so we had a second by whom? Mike? No more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, it carries six, nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, it's great.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, the next quarter of business is, uh, application 20 dash 11 of 22 GC, 2012 LLC owner. It's Andy's Plaza. Um, and we have, uh, someone here, I guess it's Chris Miller. Mike, who's presenting? Andy?
Chris Miller should be there.
I'm presenting, just here.
Hi, Andy.
How are you?
Okay. Who's going to tell us about the project?
That's a typo, I believe, on the, um, on, on the application, it's Chris Milliard, uh, as the agent. And I'm here with Terryann Hawn, uh, from LADA. And I'll let Terryann go through the site plan. And then, uh, if there's any questions on the architectials or if you want to review the, the architectural drawings, I can certainly guide through that as well. But I'll, I'll work with Terryann and start off.
Yeah. I'm just, oop, I'm just going to share my screen. Uh, good evening, this is Terryann Hahn, principal of LADA PC, um, where the site plan is for the project. Just a couple of things, Chris, I actually moved a couple of slides around, um, from last time. So, um, you'll see, you'll, you'll need to slide in a little bit sooner just because I figured we'd do that first. So the site is known, uh, is known of course as Andy's Plaza located on Hot Meadow Street and on Iron Horse Boulevard. It is three and a half acres in size, um, uh, and is zoned SC1 as it faces Hot Meadow Street and SC4 as it faces Iron Horse Boulevard. The property, uh, the footprint is a little bit over 43,000 square feet with the ground level facing Hot Meadow Street and then also a second ground level facing Iron Horse Boulevard. Um, the, um, obviously the plaza has been around for quite some time, um, and that the Andy's supermarket has been vacant. So, um, this is an opportunity to sort of revitalize that plaza and to, um, get this sort of activated again. Uh, just for references, um, uh, I pulled up, uh, some of the existing photos that were part of Chris's, um, uh, discussion. And I, I think maybe Chris, you might want to talk about how you were planning on activating the building first.
Yeah, absolutely, another problem. So, uh, right now it, it still remains as an existing, uh, single tenant, uh, excuse me, the majority of the building. And then there is also the, the liquor store that's on the right side, which is a, a tenant that's operating today and would remain to be operated. The, the larger open tenant, which was the grocery store at one point, is intended to be divided up into a collection of retail spaces, office space and restaurant space. The proposed restaurant is seen here on this floor plan on the, kind of the bottom left corner. And what we're looking to do is add a small addition onto that restaurant, which would be utilized as the, uh, drive through for the building. The, one of the, really the main reason for adding that addition is so that way that addition helps alleviate some of the, uh, conditions and some of the challenges to the site plan layout for running a, a new drive through right to that side of the building. We want to make sure that there's plenty of, uh, pedestrian visibility and vehicular visibility as they come through that drive through. So that, that was, it's really the main reason for adding that addition. But, uh, as you can see from this plan here, immediately to the right of that addition would be a corridor that services the office space, proposed office spaces in back and can also be used as an egress corridor and even a corridor for restaurants to get to the trash and, or, or for the, for the tenants to get to the trash enclosure, which is on the lower level, uh, along Iron Horse. The two tenants in the middle right now are proposed to be retail and then the green, the two green tenants are proposed to be a potential office space. So we're, we're not doing anything major to, in terms of reconfiguration of the existing building other than changing the demise interior and then changing some of the, uh, the door locations for each of these individual tenants. The building facade here is, is primarily the existing facade that's getting refinished. We're looking to paint the brick, add new, uh, cornice around the building, provide new, uh, peaked standing seam metal roofs at all the gables. And then introducing some trim to highlight a few areas, uh, and also to kind of soften the, the appearance that's there now, which is the brick, uh, darker red color brick and, and beige ephes. Introducing, uh, fabric awnings, some gooseneck lighting. And then on the left, you'll see the, the new addition that we're attaching to the side of the building for the drive through. And you can, I think this is a good image that, that shows, you know, a good reason why we're adding that addition is because as those cars come through and the pedestrians are walking along that sidewalk, we wanted to make sure there's a high level of visibility between the cars and pedestrians. So it's not a, a blind 90 degree corner. Just a, a close up view, uh, storefronts would be revised and modified as needed for, for new doors. The ceiling of that colonnade would be replaced with, uh, new material, new, new lighting. Again, just to kind of refresh that, that, uh, those surfaces that are in there now. Uh, you could see the, the painted brick. The concrete block at the water table would remain. However, we're looking to provide a stain over that concrete block. As each tenant opens, those tenant spaces would apply for their own signage permit. So, I know we just have placeholders that are, that are in those locations. And then a view of the existing liquor store, the, the geometry as, as the rest of the building is remaining the same. It would, except for the new finishes that are being applied over it, the new fabric awnings, again, the goosenecks, the, the black standing seam roof and then PVC paneling underneath those gable roof structures. Uh, another view of the, the addition for the drive through and you can, you can get a glimpse of it here a little bit. The new door that we're adding to the back of the building, which I think shows up in the next rendering a little bit better. At the back of the building, we're making sure we have a, a door primarily for egress out of that office space. Uh, we see that door could potentially be used for employee access. The, the main reason why this is not the secondary door is because we, we want to make sure people aren't walking across the drive through to get into the building. So we did provide access from the front of the building, the front parking lot into that corridor to get you to this office space. So it would be a new door, covered canopy, and then a little bit of a trellis to hide that exhaust vent that's coming up from the restaurant. At the back of the building, uh, again, more of the same painting, uh, fabric awnings, new goosenecks, metal roof. At the back of the existing groceries or, or previous grocery store, we're proposing new windows along the Iron Horse facade to allow sunlight into the building. And then directly below that, on, on kind of the, the left of that facade would have a new trash enclosure with a, a swinging gate as opposed to the rolling, uh, metal gate that's there now. Um, yeah, the, the two D's are really just more informational purposes only, I think, in terms of design and aesthetics. The, uh, the three D's are primarily, uh, what to look at, but these do help understand what some of the finishes are and where we're proposing it. And, and as I mentioned, it's painted brick, stained concrete. Um, yeah, you can go to the next one.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, so here's, here's a good list of the materials. Uh, at the top is the standing seam metal roof, proposed gooseneck, uh, painted PVC fabric awning, painted brick. Uh, we, we, any storefront that we replace would be a, a black storefront to keep in theme with the, the black and white color scheme. Stained split face, uh, concrete block, metal gate. At the back of the building, there's a, a larger concrete wall just to the right of the restaurant that's there. So we're proposing to clad that with this barn wood, uh, cladding that we're showing in this image. Again, that just helps make the building feel a little more pedestrian friendly. And then of course, I mentioned the, the softets underneath the colonnade wall be replaced.
So, at this point, just to be clear, we're, we're making, um, uh, somewhat minimal changes on the site plan. Uh, the area in gray, uh, represents the pavement that, um, would have been removed and replaced um, in order to accommodate the addition, which is this pink color, um, uh, off the, the building. I have an enlargement next. So you have a, um, it's, there's a new drive through window approximately in the right smack dab in the center of this picture. Um, but the idea is to, um, uh, try and provide clear pedestrian vehicular, um, access from the parking spaces to the front of the building and from the parking spaces to the back of the, um, entry, uh, for the office. We will be removing, um, uh, impervious surface because right now it's just a big asphalt, um, area back there. Uh, adding additional, uh, grass and planting areas, um, and, um, uh, providing for this, the new queue, the queue is actually for the drive through is 14 cars, um, uh, which is considered the high DOT standard, um, so that we were able to accommodate that without interfering with, uh, traffic in the vicinity. The, um, the planting for the most part, um, we're trying to provide for, um, some areas in the center island that could potentially be, um, it could be seeding at some point, um, but right now it's just seeded to lawn. Some, there's some minimal planting, uh, required. You'll notice that there's a couple of small buildings off on the lower right hand side. Those are sheds that are, um, to remain there, part of a, uh, monitoring program that has been in place, uh, on the site for quite some time. So those, those continue to, to remain.
Terry, can I interrupt you while you still got that page?
Yep.
I, I know you, you talked about, um, I'm, I'm a little concerned about where that little sidewalk is that goes from the parking lot on the right. Now, there's a little, a little sidewalk there between the two greens.
Right here.
Nope, down, 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 down.
This one?
Near, near number six or nine, whatever it is. I think that's a little sidewalk.
Oh, no, no, that's just a drainage leak off.
Oh, okay.
That's a drainage leak off, I got to get to the catch basin.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, no, no, it's not a sidewalk. It's, you know, it's, it's only like two feet wide, um, is, is intended to be, it's, it's just drainage.
Okay, because I.
I don't want anybody walking over there.
Yeah, because you're leaving it right under where the signboard, which is the worst visibility, yeah.
No, 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 it's, it's just intended to be a, a leak off. We, what we could actually do is we could actually put a curb stop there so that there's, there's no issues because you can get the water underneath the curb stop. But it, I need some runoff because right now my kid, there's an existing catch basin by that six that I need to get access to.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right, well, I mean, I guess, you know, we'll, we'll, I still need to address, you know, when you come out those doors, where people would go.
Well, at this point, I, I am assuming that if they're coming out of the, the office doors, they're going to take this, the sidewalk that's on the bottom of the circle here and go to the parking spaces.
Okay, instead of going to the grass.
Correct, correct, you don't want them any, the, there's no reason for them to come across this area here.
Okay.
And there's bollards here also, so, you know, I, I mean, it's, I'm trying to make it as unfriendly to make that pedestrian movement as possible.
Well, yeah, and maybe even more than bollards, can we even do a fence?
Um, you mean like a, like a little, um, wrought iron?
Yeah, wrought iron, black, not wrought iron or whatever, white, everything else is white, but, uh, something to keep them from going into that traffic queue.
Mm-hmm, okay.
If that's not the intent to go across there, let's make it difficult.
Yes, yep, okay. Uh, so just to continue on, there are existing light fixtures, um, in the, uh, throughout the plaza. It's actually, um, they're very, they're short, they're older, um, they don't have, uh, they're not LED. Uh, and they, i- in general, the, the whole plaza, both the Hot Meadow Street side and the Iron Horse side are, is very dark. Um, and so, uh, one of, uh, the proposals here is to use a similar light fixture to what is currently there, um, but make it an LED fixture, uh, and to, um, uh, upgrade the light that's available out there, uh, so that, that, that's, uh, use the, the fixtures, um, that are, that are similar to what they have and just make it better, better lit. It, it's all LED fixtures, um, so, you know, the light is up in the cone, um, but, uh, they are consistent with what's currently out there.
Near dark sky, Terry?
Uh, yeah, they should be dark sky compliant.
Thank you.
Yep. But I think that, you know, that's pretty much, um, uh, all the site plan elements. It's, it's not a lot of, um, you know, uh, big change, but it should help really change the character of the plaza as a whole, um, as well as sort of bringing it up to current levels. Chris or Andy, is there anything that you'd like to add?
I think you, uh, put it pretty well, Terry. No, we, I, I guess I'll, I'll add that, um, you know, working with Terry, we, we've explored many options on this drive through and, and how to get it to fit in there. And honestly, this, I think this is option five or six.
Yeah.
Um, which, uh, you know, I think each option was unique, but this, this option that we're presenting tonight, I believe, addresses probably the, the most important, which we think is, uh, safety and, and concern for pedestrians and vehicles on, on the site. So I, I am pleased with this layout, you know, hopefully everyone else is, is well on this, but, uh, you know, I'm interested to hear everyone's comments.
I would also note that we were in front of design review tonight, um, and they did give us a positive recommendation.
Okay, comments from, uh, commission members. Donna? You're, you're muted.
Okay, um, it seemed like in one of the renderings on the, um, Iron Horse side, the, um, the pub that's down there cu- currently, they lost some outdoor seating? Or are they just taking, uh, seating in an area that they, that's, it's supposed to be parking? It just seemed like they were losing some of their outdoor, uh, that's it's supposed to be parking? It just seemed like they were losing some of their outdoor dining.
If it's shown that way, it's certainly not intended to, you know, we rendering is the renderings are meant to focus on the buildings. It is not the intent to modify the seating that's currently there.
It was just a question.
Donna, they did expand their seating area right now for temporary outdoor seating.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, they're into a few parking spots right now.
So that's just part of the, okay.
That's part of the pandemic.
Right.
Yeah.
Ian, you have any comments? You're you're muted again. You're muted, Ian. We don't hear you yet. Do you know sign language?
Mike, were you able to unmute?
Mike, you got a comment while Ian figures out what her
Am I unmuted?
Oh, you're okay.
I'm okay now, okay.
Echoing.
And
You guys too.
Yeah.
All right, let me
Hang up your phone. I think your thing is
I can't hang up the phone because I have to hear. Just skip over me.
You can cover the mouthpiece on your phone. That might work. Mike?
I have, I actually don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman. This is a pretty cool looking project. I'm excited to see it hopefully come to fruition.
Ian, you want to go back? Try again? Now we don't hear. How about Bruce? Now you're not, you're They don't hear. Suddenly we've got everybody in trouble here. Okay, I got a question about the car flow into the drive in, drive up place. I see two lanes coming out. Can you explain how people come in? Is there a signage plan?
At the moment, there is not a signage plan. The thought is that one will be developed as each tenant arrives at the center. Not knowing exactly how much square footage each tenant will take and what the size of their sign will be, we'll have to obviously put together a unified signage plan for the site.
Okay, this is not part of this application anyway.
No, it is not.
Okay, now you're going to answer the question about the traffic.
Yep, all right. So the the way that the traffic flow into the center is right now is this that's a little over enthusiastic, sorry. This is the enter, this is an exit, right? So you would need to, the other choice is that you could come down this way. So theoretically, you could come in here and go this way, or you would come in just like everybody else does and do that. Does that make sense?
It seems like there's a pinch point there where the exit to your double exit, yeah.
Yeah, that that's correct, and that was something that we looked at in depth. And we actually made sure that there was plenty of views in for the most part. If you're coming out of here, you can then exit this way. Or theoretically, you could exit this way. But we were trying to get the maximum queue so that this zone didn't have overlap.
Okay. Answers my question. Other questions? Bruce, other than the sign? No. This is a difficult thing to do. We can't vote because they can't say anything.
Thumbs up.
Oh, yes, we can. Yes, we can. Okay. All right, any any more comments on on the proposed layout? And it looks like a really nice to me, it looks like a really nice refurbishment of that area and a good use for it. Mike, any comments from staff report?
So so we've been working with the applicant on this that this proposal. And you have a favorable motion from me with just some consideration. One is that, you know, that that the approval is for the renovation of the facade and the other interior site improvements. Separate approvals, obviously, we've we've said it several times, it will be for signs and details on the menu board. Menu board locations approved as submitted, changes to location will require some middle site plan modification, mainly because that whole traffic pattern is kind of set up right now for the 14 cars queued without having overflow into the travel travel lane. The last one is just specific to the restaurant fit out, and this was from both from the Health District and from the fire of the WPCA. Should you do a change to fit out the restaurant? The kitchen layout has to be approved by the Farmington Valley Health District, which is standard, and that WPCA will have some service charge fees associated with the sewer bill for that tenant. But that's just standard, not a not a big surprise. Otherwise, I had no negative comments from either my my office or the others.
What is the timeframe of this proposal? Chris, what what kind of timeframe is it? Andy, you could answer it.
Yeah, well, once we get through, I mean, right now, we don't have, unfortunately, it's been empty for eight years. And, you know, we've had numerous tenants fall through, so going trying to go in a different direction, so we took down the dry cleaner. It's time for him to retire anyways, and we will start the improvements as soon as possible. But right now, I mean, as far as tenancies goes, we really have no tenants lined up. So so I don't want to say shoot in the dark here, but we feel that a a drive, especially a drive through component would be in the center, Suzbury would be would enhance someone, somebody would entice somebody to come here. But as far as overall facade approval, we'll get going on right away. I don't think you'll go painting in the fall or winter, but I would say springtime, light everything up.
Okay. Are we in agreement to go ahead with the motion? Mike says yes. Bruce is nodding, I think. Okay. Donna, you've got voice, right?
I, yeah, I do. I'll I'll make a motion to approve application ZC 20-11, 22 GC 2012 LLC owner Chris Miller, agent for site plan amendment for an addition to the existing Andy's Plaza and site improvements with the following conditions listed in attachment A dated October 5, 2020.
One modification, it's Chris Milliard, not not Miller.
Okay.
The second by Mike, further discussion. All in favor, say aye or stiffer with your
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any opposed, any abstained? Okay, passing six to nothing. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for consideration.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. The next order, this is our regulations update workshop continuation. I thought the end of our last meeting that we were that Mike was going to edit the the regulations draft that he had supplied, and I didn't get that. Did anybody? Mike?
So I I gave an edited version. I apologize. We had a little issue with Dropbox over the weekend. It was in, I uploaded a revised document today. Remove the old one, put a new one in there. It includes the temporary sign regs, you know, consolidated one for the non residential zoning districts.
I I didn't see that. I, anybody else look at that? Anybody else find it?
I believe it's under the regulations folder in Dropbox.
It's under sign regulations.
Under this, under sign regulations, there's a there's a document, but I believe it's the same draft that you gave us, so.
Let me make sure.
You know, I
Yeah, I don't, I I apologize. I don't know why I uploaded it today. You're right, Dave. It's still, it's missing the the non residential zoning districts. Let me try to, I can email to the commission right now.
Mike, the thing that you know, I looked at our regulations as they exist in our current document. And then I looked at the regulations where you lined out the things that didn't work and kind of formatted something that would replace the sign regulation section without that non residential temporary section. But what bothers me is I'm not sure that I understand clearly what it is that results from this. What are we missing? What what are we giving up by wiping out those sections that are not conforming in terms of what we'll see in the street?
So so what what we're going to give up is is the different little classes that are graded. So each one, like a real estate sign or a freedom of speech sign or a you know, contractor's billboard, or when I say billboard, it's just that the construction sign they can put up. We have all those different things. Courtesy of that federal court case, we can't do that anymore. It just has to be in a zoning district, you get X square footage. We don't care how you use it, but that's what you get. So I that my, when I kind of put this, the the proposal together, I kind of started thinking about frequency of of the types of signs that I've been seeing the past seven years in residential and non residential zoning districts. And, you know, based by then by frequency, like size, like what goes out the most? What's appropriate to say in like a, for example, if we're just specific to temporary signs in a residential zoning district, you know, what's reasonable to say is a sign that's as of right, that doesn't require a permit. So six square feet, for example, the average political sign, I'd say doesn't need a permit. But the one thing that 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 we're going to lose is because we can no longer classify signs based on the user, we get into this district, it's math, it's just going to be math in either number, duration, size, height. That's what we can regulate only now. Which gets, that's the trade off we're going to lose. Because I think that there's a, there's definitely a difference in those, although you can't go to that, what they call like a class system of signage, having a class system gives the ability to say certain things are customary and incidental, and certain things are not, and and warrant a higher degree of approval.
Well, we still can require unified sign plans for multi tenant sites.
Correct.
And so when we do that, don't we have sort of the same freedoms that we have today in terms of dictating the use of single or single colors or, you know, the colors and the no logos and that sort of thing?
So I I actually, that's one of the questions I asked to Bob, whether, just to make sure we don't get into issues with content based regulations. I'm waiting on Bob. I sent a draft copy of of the the proposal to Bob DiCrescenzo to look at too. Just just to say, hey, am I on the, am I on the, on the am I following the law based on this setup? And then furthermore, here's a few other areas I'd like to a little more feedback to say, can we still do this? Which is kind of gray right now, based on the the language on the regs, the decisions. I personally, I think that in the center zone, you can do that. But I want Bob D, I want Bob D to agree with me on that. Because he's going to have to defend it if someone challenges it.
Okay, anybody else have comments about it?
First and foremost, the the polished document, Mike, that you put in Dropbox, you did put in 421 on today. It's in the regulations folder, not in the signage regulations folder.
I apologize.
Sign regulation by zone. No, it is there. It just wasn't a different
Still, I think we ought to wait for Bob D's answer to these questions before we settle on it. I I kept reading it and saying, what are we really losing? Well, I didn't see that we were really losing a lot, even though we took out a whole lot of language. But I don't know, anybody else feel that way or not? Anyway, let's let's defer that and and pick it up again next time. Mike, did you get any, I'm sorry, yeah, Mike, did you get any comment from Bob D on the on the rules thing?
I emailed him and asked for an answer on that, so I'm waiting for an answer on the Robert rules and I apologize. I saw your email. I forwarded and said I needed an answer for that. So I'll try to get that for the next meeting from him.
Okay, that that can wait. There's nothing urgent there, I don't think. Anything else that we should be looking at?
No, no, the only thing I just want to make the commission aware of was tonight, there was a very brief preliminary presentation from Chris Nelson, Nelson Construction for the redevelopment of the Simscroft Echo Farms Construction Yard on Iron Horse Boulevard. Chris Nelson is under contract to purchase the property. And they did a a kind of brief presentation. Their plans, the the preliminary plans that they have are uploaded to the website on under the design review boards page. Design Review will be discussing it again to kind of finalize some comments that we're going to get out to them, but they had some very, you know, pointed comments that they gave to the applicants, such as one thing one member was looking for was a little more uniqueness in the character, the design of the buildings. But I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a proposal that's for a multifamily development in the center.
Five buildings of about thirty, thirty seven apartments. Like that, and it it looks like a nice layout, but as the comment in the design review board was, that's a little like Highcroft and some of the other apartment buildings. Could, can you come up with something more creative and different? So Chris Nelson and and his partner Ron, is it?
No, a actually, he's with, he's partnered on this one with Allied Builders, T and M Homes. I'm trying to remember his name. It's a different partner for this this project.
Is it Bob?
I think it may have been Bob.
Anyway, yeah, so they're going to go back and look at it and massage their designs and and come back to the design review board. But basically, we're looking at apartments with an affordable housing component that will be deed restricted as required by the state. And anyway, that's that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, and if anyone's interested in it, I can email the plans directly to you.
Yeah, we, you'd have to get the link to the design review board. They're different. It's a different Dropbox.
Right on their agenda. It's real easy to get to. Just go to the, you know, just Google. If you search engine, Newsberry Design Review Board, and you just tick on their most recent agenda, all the attachments are right there. It's actually a pretty nice layout. I like that.
Okay, good. Good, okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Somebody with a voice can say.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Donna?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I propose, okay, passing six, nothing.